Eleven oh five, I'll call the meeting to order, the workshop to order. So first item of the business is approval of the agenda, Counselor Schaefer.
Thank you, Warden, through you move by myself, seconded by Counselor Gilvezzi. Resolve the agenda be approved.
Is there any discussion? All is in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Any disclosures of pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof? Not seeing any. No minutes to be adopted, correct? Should have checked that with you. No public meetings. Delegations, presentations and consideration thereof. Six point one asset management plan update, I will turn it over to Manager Lavalley. And again, for counsel, the note here is this is being presented to us in anticipation of the June eleventh meeting, so that we can have a more fulsome presentation from staff, more fulsome questions from counsel. I would suggest that, you know, what comes out of this asset management plan is going to be a large chunk of a twenty twenty six business plan and budget that we're going to receive later. So not necessarily suggesting that you have lots of questions, but I suggest that we pursue a lot of understanding so that we can deal with this better, not only at June eleventh, but as part of twenty twenty six business plan and budget. Turn it over to you.
Good morning, everyone. All right. All right, so for today's workshop, we wanted to go over with you the requirements from the regulation and why we're bringing this update forward. We'll look at some of the scenarios that we looked at in determining our proposed levels of service and go through that to help your sort of understanding as you review the asset management plan document itself, and then we'll do a summary and next steps at the end of the document. So just as a reminder, like this plan is completed as a point of, as of, at a point in time, based on the information that is available to us. We know that there's been a lot of talk about tariffs, a lot of potential implications, cost increases. We don't know what those are yet, so that could have an impact on this plan and the recommendations brought forward, and we'd incorporate that at a future point in time. Okay, so what are our requirements under the regulation? So by July first, we are to have an approved asset management plan with our proposed levels of service. That was recommendation includes options that we reviewed and the risks associated with those options. What, why we've chosen the recommended service level that we are bringing forward, what the performance looks like over the ten year period, what our lifecycle strategies are, and then the financial strategy that we are proposing in order to achieve those proposed levels of service. And then due honor before July first of each, of each year, we are required to bring forward an annual update to counsel. That annual updates to include our progress on our implementation, factors impeding our ability to complete that implementation, and our strategy to address those factors. So again, bringing into account things like the tariffs, if they come in, they could actually increase our funding gaps despite the efforts that are put forward through the twenty twenty six business plan and budget process to try and close some of those gaps. So then what our strategies are to, to address some of those challenges. So we do plan on bringing the annual update back around the same time every year. We don't have to have the full plan published, but we do want to do the complete analysis on the financial section so that we are making the most appropriate recommendations leading into every single business plan and budget process. So when we got into sort of the scenarios that we looked at, for each service area, we looked at four different scenarios, and that's sort of a system limitation, it only lets us compare four different types of scenarios. We were able to run some more, but doing some of the comparisons then got more challenging. So we're working with our, within our system limitations there. So we wanted to look at our twenty twenty five budgeted reserve contributions, what that would do to our assets over the long term, what is the fully funded scenario, and what does that look like from a condition risk standpoint? That would tie directly back to the twenty twenty four asset management plan and what recommendations and the financial information presented in that was, as that's what the system would allow us to do at that point. So keeping that in mind, if you're trying to do a comparison between what was presented in twenty twenty four to twenty twenty five. And then we looked at two other options, and our options are either based on funding target or a condition target. And those are dependent on the service area that we are able to look at. They're much easier to do on roads and bridges from a specific condition target than a lot of our other assets. There are still some existing limitations within the software itself, and we continue to work with the software provider on enhancements and bug fixes as we go. However, we feel that what we are presenting in this asset management plan would not be materially impacted by some of those things that we continue to work on through the system. Oh, for transportation services, we sort of did this analysis in two different stages. We looked at the roads themselves and did that analysis based on the pavement condition index, and that's sort of what we're focusing on as part of this presentation. And then we did the other assets, and that was focused on looking at the percentage of fully funded and how those impacts are. And for transportation, we actually reviewed this one over a shorter period. Normally, we review over a hundred years. We reviewed this one over a fifty year period. One of the challenges that we're still having with transportation services is full reconstruction of some of our rural roads. We know that that's not necessarily the case and not necessarily needed in a lot of rural areas. However, in some cases, we do need to do a full reconstruction of rural roads because they're now seeing either higher traffic volumes or, you know, the stormwater has changed sort of the road conditions, and we need to make improvements to those road conditions. So reviewing transportation services over a longer period would bring in all those rural road reconstructions, and we feel that artificially inflate sort of what our financial recommendations are here for you today. So we've shortened that period to allow us time to continue to work on what actually needs to happen versus what we don't see happening, so that we can provide more accurate information.
Do you want to take questions as we go, Janice?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay.
Does your full, your road, does it take into consideration the full load, like big trucks require from March to April, they need full load to carry their crops?
So through, that is part of the additional analysis that staff do want to do in, in looking at what roads would need to be fully reconstructed from a rural standpoint versus which ones wouldn't. We know from an urban standpoint, because of the underground infrastructure, we are doing full reconstructions on those. It's just not the same in a rural setting where there's no underground infrastructure. All right, so specifically, what did we look at in transportation? So our first scenario is generally, like I mentioned, our twenty twenty five budgeted contributions, which results in a fair condition over the scenario period. Our second scenario is the fully funded scenario, so completing all of the lifecycle activities that we have set up against those roads when they're intended to be completed. That results in a seventy seven pavement condition index for a condition rating. Our third scenario, we looked at targeting a sixty five pavement condition index, which again was a fair condition. And our last scenario, we looked at seventy pavement condition index. So it's important to note, like the county roads do see higher traffic volumes than some of the area municipalities. So from a county standpoint, we would want to have our roads in better condition than the area municipalities because they're more relied upon and more challenging and higher impacts if we were to have to close one of our roads. So for comparison to twenty twenty four's AMP scenario, B is the fully funded scenario here under the, over the fifty year period is suggesting an annual investment of twenty five point three million. The twenty twenty four AMP suggested that number was twenty five point seven million. And the twenty twenty four number would be inflated because we looked at the full hundred year period, so it was bringing in a lot of those reconstructions. So although we've brought it down a little bit, we know that inflation from last year to this year has impacted it, and we're not seeing a significant difference there. So then we use that information to look at how we then propose to fund the proposed level of service. Within the planned investment level, so this is the green bars in the chart that we're seeing on this slide, the estimated inflationary and interest rates are used, so in addition to where our twenty twenty five capital contributions are. We've also included CCBF, which is the Canada Community Building Fund, so that's the former gas tax funds. We are proposing through this plan to hold those funds to transportation. We do have a minor debt obligation within transportation services that we are then proposing to redirect that current levy obligation into the capital reserve to then offset some of those changes or some of these needs here. So then our proposed investment changes for transportation services, we're recommending an increase of, from the two hundred fifty thousand dollar increase that we included in the twenty twenty five budget to three hundred and seventy five thousand dollars for twenty twenty six, and then five hundred thousand dollars and forward for twenty twenty seven. In twenty twenty twelve, counsel first approved increasing the investments in transportation services by five hundred thousand dollars a year to try and help with the funding gaps here and in closing that. And just with inflation, we haven't been able to keep pace. There were a couple of years in there where we had other budget pressures and actually reduced that increase from the five hundred thousand. And one year, we only included inflation and did not do another increase. So that has posed some, some challenges and increased sort of the timeline that it's taken us to get fully funded in this scenario.
What sort of inflation are you dealing with, are you planning on?
So for the purposes of the AMP, it brings the costs to December thirty first, twenty twenty four. When we complete the budget package, we look at bringing those forward to Q two of twenty twenty five as well. So this is just an estimate, and we do need to look at what it is. So it's, it's around the two percent currently is what we have in here. We do know that year over year, from looking at Toronto, there's a big difference between that inflationary index, which is closer to four percent compared to London's, which is closer to seven percent. The London index is actually new that the province has been putting out, so we may be moving towards that as something that's more reflective of the costs that we see in our area here. So the next one, we wanted to sort of take a look at today's community housing. This one is done based on a percentage of fully funded. We're able to review this one over a full hundred year period. It has very similar conditions in the near term, regardless of which scenario we are looking at, and that really suggests that there's lower lifecycle needs and our reserve balance is currently sufficient to fund those needs. So regardless of where we go from a funding standpoint or scenario selection, we're not seeing changes in, or significant changes in the condition over the short term. It really, once that reserve balance sort of gets used up by the systems analysis, that's where we see a larger divergence in the later years.
Brings the question of, especially with community housing and the, the age of the stock and stuff like that, how does the asset management system work to evaluate replacement rather than continual repair to be able to do? Is there a mechanism in the, the system to be able to, okay, this is the lifespan, or is it just based off continual maintenance of keeping that asset in perpetuity?
So for the housing portfolio and for a lot of our buildings, our lifecycle strategies right now in the system are based on a run to failure. So we do have the, the main structure component set up with a longer lifespan than some of the internal components like HVAC and things like that you can replace on a more frequent basis, they'll, they'll come due more frequently. That is one of the improvement areas that we've identified that is required for our buildings is to have a better look at what rehabilitation activities we can use to extend the life on some of those assets instead of just doing them on a run to failure strategy. And that in theory would bring down what the annual requirement is.
Is there, what I'm worried about is we'll have an asset that will plan, we certainly need to plan to keep them up, but we're, we're, we're going in the long term to fund an asset that is not going to meet our needs in the long run, that should be, try to be looked at to see, okay, when's that time to be able to identify structures that should be replaced with a different type? Or where's the cost benefit analysis of keeping that going versus investing in a, in new, a new item? But I don't, is that a challenge with the asset management system to be able to, is that possible, I guess, with the current asset management system?
Within the system itself right now, no, that's something that we would look at as part of our budgeting process and what's coming up for needs to then say, okay, does it make sense to continue to rehabilitate? Or is, are we getting to a point in time where we need to start looking at the full replacement of that building or structure?
Again, pretty much in full agreement with Counselor Petrie's question and comments or, or thoughts here. I think we do need to be looking forward, and I, and I realize that my version of what the looking forward might be for social housing, for example, or housing stock, might be different than others, but I do think we need to say, okay, at what point is the end date? And then after that, what are we, what are we aspiring to? What are, what are we going to aim for? And so I think, I don't, at least I don't get a sense of that we're doing more than simply, and that's what an asset management plan does, simply look at the asset of the day and try to project out. But my suggestion would be that as we project out, the asset of today will not be the asset of tomorrow, we'll get rid of this, and we'll have something much better, or better, different anyways.
To you, Warden, on similar lines, I'm actually glad that Counselor Petrie asked this line of questioning, because like I can think of a few developments, and you think back of some of the social housing that was probably built in the sixties and seventies, and it covers a large space of land. So it's not necessarily efficient, like from a standpoint on what we are building today, like creating higher density projects. And the other thing is, there, the age of them is getting to the place where you have to wonder if it's feasible to continue to move in the direction of continually like trying to maintain them versus leveling and restarting.
So one of the things that we do try to consider when we're looking at replacement costs is what it would be in today's construction standards or today's requirements to replace those units. So even though it, it's not necessarily like for like, especially in the case of like bridges where the standards have changed significantly, so we have to build to a different standard, we're defining that replacement cost based on that new standard that we have to, to look to. We also include growth related assets in the asset management plan. So if we're identifying a need for a larger structure, we want to multi rez with three extra floors on it, those three extra floors, we'd look at adding as a separate asset into the asset management plan at the projected year that we've got it, so that we can then start looking at those projections. So I don't think we've identified anything of that nature from the housing portfolio as of this point in time, but as soon as we do identify the, that type of item, we would incorporate all the future needs into that, and then the financial recommendations that we're bringing forth would include that. So for community housing, our scenarios were the twenty twenty five budgeted contributions, fully funded, seventy five percent funded, and eighty five percent funded. The selection based on review with staff was to look at the seventy five percent funded scenario. We did look at a various different scenarios between like community housing, long-term care, corporate facilities, and determining what are the risks and implications of an asset failure in those, in those cases. From a corporate facility standpoint, a lot of staff have the ability to work from home. From a housing standpoint, you know, we've got families in those homes, where do we put those families if those assets are no longer usable? Much different implications between the two different types of uses, and therefore we figured that from this housing portfolio is, would require us to be more highly funded in order to mitigate some of those risks and challenges that we'd have of displaced families and, and the costs associated with that, either putting them into motels or whatever, so that we can get them back into a home. So similarly with community housing, our planned investment level includes estimated inflationary and interest rates for revenue that's earned on our capital reserve balances, and that interest earned will fluctuate depending on what that reserve balance is. So when there's lifecycle needs or non lifecycle needs, we can earn some different interest. And then as part of this portfolio, recognizing that there is a, a more significant, a significant gap here, we are looking at an additional increase to the reserve by three percent annually. So that's not three percent of the total levy, that's a three percent increase on our current contribution into that reserve, which amounts to forty one thousand dollars for twenty twenty six. And I know that, that does seem like a low number, however, we are trying to balance through the asset management plan all the different impacts for all the different service areas on the overall levy, and in doing that, looking at what are the conditions? What are the impacts of maybe going slower in some of the areas compared to faster and what that does to conditions and things like that? So this, because we have a current reserve balance, and we've actually received some CMBHC funding towards the housing portfolio recently, which has really helped with our lifecycle needs, we've been able to complete some of those, some of that work with those additional funds, allowing us to leave more money in this reserve. So we're able to handle a bit slower of an increase on this, this portfolio because of that funding as well.
The question on that, when you look at the, the, the average condition of our, our assets in community housing, I believe it says poor, a lot to do with age. I know we have to have funds in our asset, the management plan, but again, as you mentioned, there's people living in, in the houses. We have, we have funds, we have funds there. I just wanted, I know we have to balance out keeping those funds available for future needs, but we have current needs as well. Where's, where's, how's the decision made metric work on what, when, what time to spend that money? Is it just based off condition rating? Or is it, because it comes to time where it's like, okay, I don't, we have a lot of roofs to replace, or we have this to replace, and I guess that's always a challenging scenario, but what does that look like on how that, the asset management plan recommends that the budget scenario?
So the asset management system itself right now looks at our lifecycle curves, what we've said needs to be done when, and it's projecting that to be done at the bottom of sort of that range right now. And we've identified that as, as an inefficiency in the system. Like if we give it a range of condition, say forty percent condition, a fifty percent condition, we want the system to find the ideal time in that, and right now, it's not even looking at it until it hits the bottom of that range. So we've identified that as, as an improvement area that we want it to look at. And then it also looks at the risk, and that is one area, again, that's identified as an improvement need throughout a lot of these scenarios is, is to look at that criticality. Are there components of a facility that if they fail, it's okay, because it can either be replaced quickly or it can't, and then that's potentially an item that can be deferred? Or is that, or another component that's extremely critical and that it's a catastrophic failure and we just can't accept deferal of that? And then that, once that risk is set up, it will prioritize that asset lifecycle activity with that higher risk over the one with the lower risk?
I guess, is it helpful, would it be helpful for counsel to provide a direction on where we want to see that, that level of risk be associated, like to provide direction on that to see, okay, if we have these assets, we want to see a budget based off this level of, of service?
Yeah, so for the asset management plan, the recommendations are based on discussions that we've had with all the division areas, so it is not up to, to my team. Like we've met with, with, with Rebecca for the housing portfolio and had those discussions along with facility staff, determine what we felt. Part of the update process that we're required to do is, is look at where we end up every year, right? How is that impacting our risk? How is that impacting our condition? So did we pick the right strategy? And are the risks actually working out the way that we think they're going to be, so that we don't run into those types of scenarios where, where we have a situation that something has come up that we did not anticipate? So we're constantly going to be reviewing that to make sure that it's still the right. Could counsel direct us, we've said seventy five percent is our target, to be eighty or eighty five percent funded? Absolutely, we could change to that if that's counsel's purview. So then we wanted to have a look at a couple of the water systems as well. Interkip wastewater system, we did this based on the percentage of fully funded, again, looking at this system over a hundred year period. Basically, the system has a very similar condition under any scenario that we looked at until twenty one hundred. This is due to the age of the system, it's a relatively new system, it was almost entirely linear, that was implemented all within a very short couple of years. One thing that we want to bring to attention from all of our wastewater and our water systems is that the PVC pipes, it's a theoretical life of ninety years that we're using. Those pipes have not been around for ninety years, we don't know if they're going to last ninety years, if they're going to last a hundred and fifty years. So ninety is what we're using until we have more experience from, from that asset being in the ground and what it looks like from a deterioration standpoint. So for Interkip, we looked at twenty twenty five budgeted contributions, a fully funded scenario, a sixty percent funded scenario, and an eighty percent funded scenario. As part of those scenarios, we did discuss potential risk failures, what that would look like from meeting our regulatory obligations. So we wanted to make sure that we don't put ourselves in a position where we have any issues from a regulatory standpoint, from an environmental standpoint. So this, this recommendation, although scenario C in is just sixty percent funded, we feel that that's appropriate in a lot of cases, because with long lifespans of infrastructure, although you're putting money away for it day one, you're not anticipated to replace everything all at once, generally speaking. So you can borrow from what you've put aside for, for some assets, use it when you need it, and then use it to replace. So we can do some of that with some of these longer life assets, so that helps us target a So that helps us target a smaller number that's probably more sustainable for our residents in the long term. So we included only this one chart of the condition comparisons in this presentation as a, as an overview. Because it is, it looks like it's plummeting. We wanted to, to just address that that is a planned decline in condition as Inner Kip, as well as Ambro, as they both look very similar, are PVC pipes with a long life. We don't anticipate rehabilitation on them. They're straight end-of-life replacement based on current best practices. So we would expect this system's overall condition to decline until that point where they reach end of life, and then we need to do replacement. Where this chart is showing between the green, yellow, red, and blue lines is how much money have we set aside to do that system replacement? So in each of these cases, the only one where we can essentially do, the majority of the replacement is in that fully funded scenario or scenario B, that green line. However, it's still saying that, you know, because we haven't been replacing or putting enough aside since day one. Come, you know, 2099, 2100 there, we don't have enough to do all of the assets that are in that system to bring it up fully. So it'll do the majority of them and then move on. What's the likelihood of us needing to do all of them at once? Yes, we did install them all within a couple of years, but the likelihood of us doing that again is probably very fairly slim, I would imagine, because that's a lot of roadwork that has to happen at the same time. So we do it over a longer span, which would help from a funding standpoint. And should we need to do them all at once, we can always use a bunch of funding to help mitigate some of that risk and requirement. So from a planned investment level, from Inner Kip's wastewater system, estimated inflationary rates and interest rates. And that is sort of all we are projecting for the first few years. And that one's no change to the rate or the capital contribution outside of inflation is being proposed. What you see in 2029 there as that bar jumps up significantly is a growth assets that, that's been identified that we anticipate to come on, that would then increase sort of our need there. So then we see a proposed investment beginning in 2029 as a result of that new asset coming online until we get back up to fully funded, which is really the reserve that's driving that. So that new asset will be funded primarily from development charges, so it's not pulling a draw on that reserve balance.
Thank you. Thank you, Warren. Through you to Jennifer. You're talking there about the twinning of the pipe, probably. Is that the asset you're talking about?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Just a question on as we've, I, I, we can't predict the future, obviously, because there's talk about the provincial government changing development charges as well. It's always a concern about what we'll be able to rely upon for that ongoing scenario. How much does development charges play in the asset management cycle? I don't know, pays for the inserting, but the, the asset management is based off the, the ongoing funding to try to replace that. Does staff have a preliminary concern about what we might see out of that legislation affecting our asset management plan?
So certainly, we'd have to look at how we would fund anything that is then potentially taken out of development charges. So our reserves are built for lifecycle needs. They're not built for new assets. And our reserve policy does require the cost for new assets outside of rates to, to be based on the levy. So that would just essentially increase the amount that's going on the levy for those non-rates-related assets. For the rates-related ones, it would be the rates that would need to increase to, to account for that unless a strategy of council was to have the entire community look after that as a result of, of the provincial changes. But we would certainly have those discussions once we know what those impacts look like. For the purposes of this funding and the way this looks like, all those initial purchases are not included in here of those assets because we're assuming that they're development charge funded or funded from a different levy contribution. So this looks strictly at those lifecycle needs after that asset has been brought online. So the Jumbo wastewater system, very similar types of things from a scenario standpoint that we looked at here. The Jumbo wastewater is a little different than Inner Kip in that we actually have a wastewater treatment plant in Jumbo. So there is a mix of those long lifecycle, a larger mix of those longer lifecycle assets compared to the shorter assets that are like equipment and things like that, that maybe 30 years, maybe 10 years or less. So looked at very similar scenarios here, the 2025 budgeted contributions, fully funded, that 60% target that we suggested for wastewater. And then sort of scenario C was something in between where we are currently and that 60% funded. As you can see from this, the, the current investment that we're setting aside is $22,000 for Jumbo as of the 2025 budget. That is not a sustainable system. So that is really challenged. Same thing with scenario C here. We said that would not result in a sustainable system for us. So we are still targeting that 60%, that same recommendation that we made for Inner Kip. It's been made for all wastewater systems, and that's to target the 60% funded scenario. So this financial chart, chart that's shown here looks a little different than the other ones. So the, the lighter green bar there, that's still your planned investment level, which is your estimated inflationary under your reserve interest that is earned, reinvestment of debt obligations into your reserve. The darker green here is growth. And as you see, the growth is the biggest impact in this one here. Although the wastewater treatment plant expansion project's complete, there's still a whole bunch of planning applications that need to be progressed before that actual growth will start contributing to the cost of the system. So we've sort of tried to estimate what that would look like early on. But this system is highly dependent on that growth coming online for its sustainability. Jumbo currently has the highest fixed rates across the county for their wastewater rates. So that is something that we kept in mind too when we were proposing investment changes. So we only proposed an increase in the reserve contribution by 2%. It's only $1,000 in 2026, 23 cents monthly to the resident or 2.76 annually. Realizing that's not a lot, but again, Jumbo has the highest rates across the county. So we did not feel that it would be prudent at this time to go higher than that, given all the unknowns around growth and when that comes online. So this is a system that we're going to monitor very closely on that impact and what the funding strategies are to make sure that we can be sustainable with that growth. So if that growth does not happen early and it's delayed for whatever reason or just slows down, then we may need to go in and request higher rate increases in order to keep that system sustainable, which will be a challenge for the residents within that system.
Just a question with regard to, this is their own wastewater treatments, but the Inner Kip, they flow into Woodstock. The rates that they, residents pay, part of that's contribution towards the Woodstock facility for the work that, the portion that they use, is that correct?
That is correct. All right. So then we also wanted to have a quick look at waste management as part of this presentation. We reviewed this over a 30-year period and not over a 100-year period. The reserve is for waste, for our landfill, Waste Diversion Reserve Fund is not just for replacement of assets, but it's used to fund the expansion of the landfill to handle more waste. So we had to look at this one a little differently than we did any of our other scenarios that we reviewed. We have a 2023 technical memo that we used to look at all the financial requirements through the system. And that is for looking at opening the South fill area and all five cell expansions for that South fill area. So if we had looked at this scenario over a 100-year period, even though the first 30 years are significantly high, it would have reduced our annual requirement because beyond that 30-year period, the, the requirements were lower. So we wanted to shorten that to say, this is what we need today and what we need to look at today. So we also adjusted the reserve balance from our 2024 closing balance based on the commitment that council made to the green bin program and getting those organic carts so that we weren't inadvertently including that in our needs and the analysis that we completed. So for our first scenario, we looked at our 2025 budgeted contributions. And that would complete three cell expansions within the required timeline. Our second scenario was looked at to complete all five cell, cell expansions within the required timelines based on that 2023 technical memorandum. So that's sort of our fully funded scenario. The fourth scenario we looked at was completing four cell expansions. And then the fifth scenario was that we only deferred that fifth cell expansion by one year. And this is sort of the annual investments that then came out of that. So as part of this analysis, this is based on what the technical memo says for what capacity gets filled each year. So I know we're proceeding with some additional diversion by bringing in the green bins. We don't know how much of a diversion that's going to impact. So increasing the diversion, and I know waste management is very big on continuing to look at diversion and increasing that diversion rate. That would help us with these scenarios, and it would help defer that, those needs beyond what the projected is from that 2023 technical memorandum. So we've selected scenario D for waste management, which is that deferral of that fifth cell expansion by one year, but we feel that that can easily be mitigated by diversion. So the average condition and average risk don't change in any of the scenarios here, given that we're looking at the bulk of the funding need is for expansion and not for replacement of those assets over that 30-year period. We've included, same as all the other ones, estimated inflationary and interest rates. This is a big portfolio where interest has a significant impact because we have those large requirements to open that South fill area coming up within the next 10, 20, and 30 years. The interest that we earn on this reserve is going to reduce significantly as we draw that reserve balance down. And with that interest declining, we then have to make up that money elsewhere. So we're looking at a levy increase or increase to the tipping fees in order to offset that decline in that interest balance. So and that's sort of here, whereas the other charts, the green you saw was continually increasing. Here it fluctuates because that interest fluctuates so much on the reserve balance. So we're recommending to increase the contributions by $50,000 each year. That can be mitigated from a levy impact standpoint by an increase to the tipping fees. So it's not necessarily $50,000 on the levy. That gets looked at as part of the fees and charges process through the budget process. And we want to stress that this does not include planning for a new landfill site once that landfill reaches capacity. So those costs can be significant. So we'd need to do that in addition to what is being done here over this 30-year period. So any other questions on the scenarios before I get into the summary part? So what does that look like overall from an investment need? Our current replacement value is approximately 3.9 or $4 billion. That's increased from 3.7 from the 2024 asset management plan. The annual investment at 100% funded is about $77 million. So we're, based on all the proposed levels of service, we're looking at about $58 million is what our proposed investment should be over the period. We're currently at $48 million overall, which puts us at a deficit of nearly $10 million annually. The most significant driver of that is within the general levy, and that is our transportation services is the one that had the largest gap and required the most funding over the projected period. These numbers also do not include the requirements for stormwater. We are identified through the 2025 business plan, a new FTE that was required to assist with construction activities and the collection of our stormwater data. That project is well underway. We've got collection, but it is a large undertaking and anticipated to take us at least a year to complete all of that and get all the information in order for us to bring forward a recommendation that, that we can essentially stand behind and have confidence in. So for the 2026 budget, from a stormwater standpoint, we'd be looking at what our construction needs are and what the costs related to those constructions. So the, the roads are, are driving those stormwater requirements. And we would make recommendations in that budget package for stormwater based on those needs. So what does that increase look like from a library levy standpoint? Our only recommendation for 2026 is inflation. We do feel that there are some other pressures on the library from an operating side of things that, that may require some investment there. We don't have a lot of needs from a lifecycle standpoint currently from the library. So we have sufficient funding to complete the needs that we have identified. So we, that is the reason that we are just proposing inflation there, which amounts to 0.12% on their levy from an increase. So from a general levy standpoint, we're looking at an increase of our estimated inflation, 0.2 million, and a proposed investment increase of 0.4 million for 2026, largely driven by the roads increase as well as some of the other ones throughout the area. So that amounts to 0.7% in 2026 based on the 2025's levy figure. And then here, our capital contribution does include both the CCBF and OSIF funds that we get. And it's not just our, our levy contributions that we are putting in. So we are, because those grant programs are predictable, we are able to include that funding in those analysis. And then from a water and wastewater standpoint, we're looking at inflation of 0.2 million and a proposed investment change of nearly a $1 million reduction overall. So that is about 1.5% decrease in rates. Now this does look, this particular slide summarizes all the water and wastewater. We know that they're, they're financially managed separately. So some systems are projecting an increased need where there was a deficit identified. And some are actually recommending that we reduce the fixed portion of the charge by a specific amount as it was overfunded from what our proposed level service target was. So within the asset management plan itself, we do identify sort of what that dollar amount would be based on that fixed portion specifically related to capital, recognizing that there may be other requirements and other pressures from an operating standpoint that would then maybe reduce that overall rate reduction that they are seeing. And then what are our next steps? So the asset management plan will be before council on the June 11th, 2025 meeting for approval. Recognizing that the financial recommendations in the plan are only to be approved in principle at that meeting and that it is the 2026 budget process that will look at actually approving what those recommendations are. So we'll be identifying, within each service area, will be shown clearly in the asset manage, or in your budget package as an increase so that they, you can tie back the budget package directly to the asset management plan recommendation and then make the approval through there, or recommendation for changes to what we have suggested throughout the 2025 asset management plan.
Warren, you've listed some improvement opportunities. And what, what is your biggest challenge that's within your control? Obviously, the future and the growth, that's not within your, those are variances that can happen. But what would you say your bigger, biggest challenges to get to the, where you want to be with the system?
So I think it just depends on how quickly we want to implement those improvement areas. There's a lot that we still want to work on, and the risk information, the lifecycle information, they do require a lot of time. So if we wanted to have higher confidence quicker, it would come down to resources. So with those improvement areas, I will be sitting down. So with those improvement areas, I will be sitting down with staff afterwards and sort of prioritizing the improvement areas we've identified throughout the asset management plan, which ones sort of have the biggest impact on the financial recommendations or the risks and allowing us to increase the data and focusing more on those first than some of the others that are just more the nice-to-haves and that don't have the material impacts. That is all I had for today, unless there's any other specific questions.
Any other questions, comments? Counselor Palmer.
Yeah, my comment is that I believe the world is in a period where there can be many changes in things like inflation and interest rates, and I believe it's going to make your job very, very complicated.
Counselor Mayberry and Counsel Deputy Warren.
Just a comment would be, thanks very much for all the work that's done on this. I can imagine how complex the calculation and the thinking through what is the lifecycle or what is the replacement and all that sort of for each individual asset. And I think really just empowering council to sort of have a vision of where we want to go, and then it's up to us to decide, are we going to get there quickly or slowly? And all that, I agree with that. But I just wanted to say thanks because I always believe that if you have something, you have a responsibility to take care of it, one way or another. And so this, in fact, empowers council to be able to do so. So thanks very much.
Deputy Warren. Yeah, it's a never-ending challenge that we're facing. The biggest thing is that we're thinking about these items. It's a challenge moving forward to how much do we fund before the asset needs to be replaced, and how much do we burden the taxpayer at that time or the ventures to be able to replace it? And again, like you mentioned, with water, wastewater infrastructure, you have new material cycles coming in. There's not a finite time there. I guess my most, my highest level of interest in this is what resources can we, where do we put the resources to provide the best possible chance of having the best outcome as far as data and information that's needed to make sure that those things that are controllable are gathered and put into the scenario? So those financial recommendations, you know, can be prudent as possible. They're never going to be perfect because, again, there's a lot of variables that are outside of everybody's control. But the county is a very complicated, large, large area of, sphere of influence, so there's a lot of variables going on there. But I like to see that there is, there is, there's different areas, and everything has a different scenarios and thought pattern going in there about what is the best way to move forward at this time. And I guess that's my thought there is, I would, I'd certainly be interested in any information from staff, whether it be through asset management or the other departments, about resources that would make it easier to be able to provide that information and incorporate it, that asset management thought across the corporation-wide, just make it a part of daily operations. Anyone else? I really encourage council to think about this presentation before June 11, and then in anticipation of 2026 business plan and budget. If we, as long as council maintains service level, the only controls we have over this cost of this for residents is how we fund the asset management plan. Staff are inevitably going to come back to us and say, as long as you want this service level, these are your assets. And they're going to report to us what they think is a financially responsible way to look after that asset. And after that, the only decision for this council is, do we, do we pay the bill early and probably less, or do we pay the bill later and probably more? And that's about it. So I really encourage you to think about this. If you have questions for staff, fire it to them in advance of June 11, because if we don't change it on June 11, this will inform the business plan and budget for 2026. So just encourage you to really think about that actively. Again, because this isn't the, obviously, the sexiest or news line, headline-getting report that we get, but this is really where the money is literally buried in a municipal budget, is in the asset management plan. Any other comments or questions? Not seeing any. Thank you. Consideration correspondence, none. Reports from departments, none. Unfinished business, none. Motions, nor is motions, inquiries? Not seeing any, no closed bylaws. Counselor Schaefer.
Thank you, Warren. Through you. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Guevazi, resolved that bylaw number 6736-2025 be given a first and second reading.
Is there any discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Counselor Schaefer.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Guevazi, resolved that bylaw number 6736-2025 be given a third and final reading.
Any discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And Counselor Peterson.
Thank you, Warren. Moved by Peterson, seconded by Counselor Mayberry, resolved that regular council meeting of May 28, 2025 be adjourned until the next meeting scheduled for June 11, 2025 at 9:30 a.m.
Is there any discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried, and we are adjourned.